Six, Jim is online.
Jim is online. It's a two-way conversation today. We actually tested that out.
All right, well. Three oh one, three o'clock exactly. And I will call to order this meeting of the Erie County Board of Elections. Ms. Anon, if you would do the roll call. Mr. Bale?
Here.
Mr. Horton?
There.
Mrs. Shauerman?
Here.
Mr. Scatella?
Here.
Mr. Shane?
Yes.
Mr. Winarski? Mr. Winarski? Jim, can you unmute? Or, Mr. Winarski, can you unmute, please?
Erhu, son of a gun. It was good until the meeting.
Are you present? And Chairwoman Rennie? Here. All right, we will move on to item three on the agenda. That is the hearing of the public. Do we have anyone who has signed up? No. Is there anyone from the public who wishes to be heard? Jim, I'll recognize you. Three minutes, and if you would state your name and your municipality.
Hi, thank you. Jim Works, City of Erie. I have just three quick items. I noticed in the announcement of the spring primary in the newspaper this morning. Of course, I'm sure it's a function of the new maps not being, not being confirmed yet. The seventeenth House District was still listed there. And also, one correction, the State Democratic Committee seats, Erie County will have five seats to vote for, not six. So that is one, one correction for the spring primary ballot. And then, of course, I will, I will put up my annual request for the Board of Elections to approve the covering of the cost of the return postage on our mail ballots, assuming that we will still be operating with mail ballots after the appeal to the Supreme Court. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else from the public who wishes to be heard?
Yes, this is Freda Kepfer in Erie. I was just asking about the status of the six-nine polling plate.
Freda, there has been no change at this time.
So there is a plan to make sure that it's done in time to provide adequate notification to the people who are using that polling plate?
Yes, ma'am. There are things set in place. The office will send out notification to everyone. Thank you. Anyone else from the public who wishes to be heard? Yes?
Dave Shalaski, for this thing. Just said one piece of information I received today, and I said this time of year. We will be able to provide the act so that the trace data to target for tracking the ballots.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public who wishes to be heard? Anyone else from the public who wishes to be heard? And last call, anyone from the public who wishes to be heard? Thank you. Seeing none, I will move on to item number four on the agenda, comments from the board. I'm assuming we put this in this order because of the resolution. Thank you. All right. I don't know. I guess before we get started, I'd like to know if either Ms. Anon or Ms. Fernandez, if you would like to make any comments as far as factual information that we may not have in front of us, or anything that you think we need a reminder on?
So, yeah, I prepared just a short statement, if you wouldn't mind.
Oh, sure.
Okay. And actually, I'm just going to read part of this, just so I can keep it relative to your request. Since the 2020 elections, I've been talking to election directors across Pennsylvania, and through those conversations, it has become clear to me that we are being significantly overcharged for mailing services. I understand that our current provider is a smaller mailhouse, and they might not have the equipment to produce our items at a lower cost. They also do not have the equipment to print our ballots and stuff them electronically, which I believe is why we may be being charged a labor fee. In the last election, there was a return postage issue. Without clear instructions to do so, Gores printed the return postage on all return envelopes. We received notification of the error on October 5th, and were told it will be another week before they could get new envelopes. At that time, Doug and I had to decide to move forward with the envelopes that we had. So we were charged $25,000 for that. I did speak to Gores afterwards and asked them to share that bill with us, and they were only willing to give us a $3,000 credit. Also, my notes, it's showing that in 2021, we spent $294,000 with Gores. For the very first election we had with them, we spent, or I'm sorry, for the general election in 2020, we spent $190,000. To me, that's significant. So I just wanted to bring that to your attention.
All right, thank you. I appreciate the information. Just to go over some of the facts, I guess, we have in front of us, and I know that there's a big concern among the members of the Election Board, and I want to open the door to have each of you speak, if you wish to speak. I did want to make mention of the fact that we only began looking at quotes from other vendors because we didn't know for sure whether Gores Ains could secure the paper, and that was the biggest concern. Once we began looking into that a little bit more, and we knew that there had been the issue from last year with the postage on the envelopes, but once we began looking at that a little bit more, I think it was a little bit eye-opening in view of what some of the other companies could provide and in view of the, the cost comparison. So that is a concern. We didn't have a contract with Gores. We were going year to year. We knew that we would, at some point, bid it. Probably would have done so this year. We were a little bit late in getting going with the Board of Elections, and for various reasons, it didn't happen. But we began looking at other companies in good faith. I do want to say that, with good intention. So having said that, laid the foundation, I'd like to open up the floor to members of the Board of Elections for their reaction, comment, input. Thank you.
All right.
Mr. Shane?
Thank you. We appreciate everybody coming out today. This is, this is an important thing. We have to get it right. Responsible that we represent the folks of Erie County, and we're here to spend their dollars properly and making sure we do it efficiently, and we make sure that we make our constituents happy at the same time. It's, it's a tough balancing act for all of us sometimes. And I just want to make sure that everybody understands we're here to the best of Erie County, for best here for the our constituents and the taxpayers that pay the bills, and we're, that's who is ultimately responsible for us sitting here or not. So, you know, I, I know I've heard a lot of different things. I've seen some shenanigans. I've seen some half-trues kind of overplayed this way. So, I mean, I've pretty much said what I needed to say. Pretty much, everybody knows where I stand on this, and I'll yield back.
Thank you. Yes.
It's kind of tough in this day and age, what we went through the last years, to take business with Erie County. Lord. And I understand the big difference in money. Understand the mistake for everything being so confused, time constraint, you know, maybe we should both share the mistake. It's time, we'll take a $3,000 credit, but for the people that live in Erie County, we're going to take work away from them after what's happened these two years. And I, I know we tried to help the taxpayer out by looking for the best you would get, but I just I'd rather see it stay here, which especially after last year. I'm not sure if there's a big difference now. I don't know if you adjust to.
I applied some competitive products.
That's, that's my feeling where I'm sitting right now. I'm kind of concerned about the way we don't bid it out, send however you do it. For this type of money, why aren't?
Mr. Scatella? I think I can fill you on that if you.
Oh, please, Jim.
The reason that it worked out this way is that we were kind of thrown headfirst into this with Act 77, with the introduction, not only of mail ballots, but of paper ballots. And then the pandemic, all at the same time. Gores was actually the first company in Pennsylvania that was certified, and the only company, if I'm not mistaken, in Pennsylvania that was certified. So, you know, I've worked with Gores a number of times over the years, both from the Election Board and also from the library as well. And we've been grateful for the work that they did, that they, they did step up, most certainly did. This was never intended to avoid bid process. It was just circumstances of the pandemic and the timeframe, and even being able to find vendors who could be certified to do the work that's being done. The market has tightened up considerably since then. It's become much more competitive, just in the past year or so. And as I said, we're ready to bid it out. It's just the timing factor this year, and we need to move along. So, but we will be bidding it for 2023 and from then on, obviously, so that the opportunity will be there for anyone who is interested. Thank you. I'll yield back to you. Thank you. Appreciate that. Anyone else from the Election Board who wishes to be heard? Mr. Shauer?
I guess I would like to say that I have trouble with taking jobs away from the people in Erie County, but I'm not entirely happy with the way this came to be. I'm a widow of a businessman that used to place bids, and if the results of bids were known in an effort for someone to rebid, that was just it, it just doesn't sit right with me. And I don't agree with the way the process was done. It was an eye-opener when we saw the difference in the cost. So I, it's almost a blessing that this happened because the, the paper would have been available, and we would have went along with our original plan. We would have never known what the cost differential was. So I'm actually glad it happened for that reason. And even though I don't like the way the process went, I, I do struggle with taking jobs out of Erie County. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Anyone else from the Election Board? Mr. Horton, thank you.
Thank you, Chairman Rennie. I don't disagree with what everyone said. Long before most of you got here, that's been a staple of my legislative priority was to ensure that Erie ballots stay in Erie County, to employ Erie people when possible. But with that said, another staple of the way that I govern is due fairness. And I think that fairness and justice must always govern by actions. I think that it was improperly done without pointing fingers. And the numbers were, to say, out of a they were ridiculous, in my, in my opinion. There should never, I'm embarrassed, there should never be where another company during an open bid process or lack of bid process went through a process of hiring people because didn't bid. There should never be a occurrence when one gets the others bid information and then come back with a counter bid. And I just think that I, I'd be hard-pressed to support that, regardless of if it's an entitled company or not, just from having, from being a person who has probably gotten a little bit too accustomed to being treated unfair. And I don't think that anyone in this room could say that 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 process was okay. And so I, I, I won't be supporting, I'll, I'll go on record saying right now, because it looks like the votes may be going a certain way. So mine is a protest vote. Will be a protest vote. Mine will be a vote for fairness, and there should never, ever, ever, I pray that that never, ever happens again. I'm embarrassed. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Horton. Anyone else from council? Before, from the Board of Elections? Right. Seeing none, I'm going to say a few words. I have been very torn, I think, like most others. There were some discrepancies in terms of apples to apples, as the, as the phrase goes, comparisons. But the truth is that the county has spent a whole lot of money over the last couple of years and now going into year number three. I think I, when I did the calculation, it was on the order of a half a million dollars. At least that's what I was looking at on the county budget sheets. That's a whole lot of money. And I can't even substantiate all of the ways that things were charged, although, you know, it may well be fine. I guess what troubles me most was the fact that we were seeking quotes. It was not a closed bid, sealed bids, or anything like that, but we were seeking quotes as part of the normal process of fact-finding, and competitors' information should not be shared, should not be collated and presented to us in a summary sheet by the vendor. And I just find it to be improper. I also feel, looking back over it, I think the county was overcharged, to be honest. And when I look at what is available out there in terms of specialized services now for the cost that is being proposed to us, I think the county has to come down on the side of effective management of budget, not of propping up any one business. And there, it wasn't that many years ago that it was brought to my attention that there was a business in Erie County that existed solely on county money. When that money was taken away, the business folded, which is sad. It shouldn't happen, but neither is the county responsible, responsible for propping up any business in Erie County. We use county businesses when and where we can, but it still has to be competitive. It still has to be the right choice for taxpayers in the end. And it still has to be the right choice in terms of effective services. The county is like a business in that sense as well. So I will be voting in favor of retaining a different company. We will be bidding it the end of this year, probably for 2023. And I would welcome anyone to place a bid for the services, but I will be voting to retain Election IQ for this year. Thank you. Anyone else?
And to?
Yes.
I'm not sure why the contract has to go throughout the year. The Election Board could retain a contract for the primary and then bid process, or do an RFP, so. It sounds like the members of the Board are divided between the two, between, between the idea that we want to keep, or the Board wants to keep the contract in Erie, and yet that contractor's price is a little bit high. If that's, if that's the big issue, then perhaps we should, the Board should just retain somebody for the primary election and bid it. There's no reason, there's no requirement that we wait until next year.
We did consider that. I talked with some of the staff with elections, and I think that would place an undue burden on what the Elections Department to have to bid it in mid-year. Typically, a bid is extended for an entire year, and that's just my opinion. Obviously, motion, any motion made could split it that way. I, I just think it would be difficult. And I don't, I don't know. I haven't had any input from just recently, but if you, Ms. Anon or Ms. Fernandez, if it makes a difference to you as far as doing something for the primary and then opening it up to a bid process for the general election, or waiting until 2023?
I think my main concern would be papers. Right now, whatever vendor we start to work with, we want to make sure that they secure enough paper for the year. Shortage is understood.
That's all. All right.
That would be the purpose of bid.
I was just waiting to kind of.
Right. But if they can order now to prepare, that was, that was my concern. Right?
Yes. I think Ms. Fernandez also requested correctly from speaking outsourced, that, that we contract an additional piece of software for election night, and I don't know if that was part of this IQ proposal. So it's a separate piece that there are.
I'm not aware, I'm not aware of that service, Election IQ, but it is something that we want to look at, something we want to secure for that selection.
Sure. Yes, thank you, ma'am. I'm going to have to go with our solicitor on this one. I think we need to fix this train wreck, put it back on tracks. Our, our election cycle has a million broken parts in it, from the state all the way down to what we're doing here on county government. So all we can do is we can fix county government. We can't fix what's going on in the state. We can't fix what's going on in the courts. We don't really know yet what they're going to decide one way or the other. So I, I'm, I'm in tune to agree with our, our solicitor, Talarigo. Finish this one, get this back, get this done out of our way, put it on a clean slate, open it back up to biddings. Bidding properly the way it's supposed to. We don't have to amend codes for this, and we don't have to amend codes for that. But we need to keep this process moving forward. We're all guilty of kind of dragging our feet and having some issues with this election cycle, and we need to fix it. We're going to fix it today. So what is the ramifications after today on the fall elections? And you know, we always try never to make you one more paper fork than we have to. However, we have to look at the sanctity of, of, of the process of actual bids being put out, where there was no actual bids put out, and there was some false information sent to this company, and so much good information to that company. So that's why we wanted to make sure this was all square and on the plate evenly. So, I yield back. Thank you.
Well, I'm, I'm not sure I'm really going to accept the insinuation that anything improper was done. We did waive the purchasing code for going with Gores, and no one had a problem with that, but we had good reason to be seeking other solutions. Very good reasons. And I, there's been nothing done by the Board or by the election staff that is in any way improper. However, the sharing of the information was improper. There is no other way of describing it. It wasn't right. It was unethical, the very least. And I think that's really the, the main issue here. However, the Board votes, the Board votes, and I think it is time to end the discussion and bring it to a resolution. Do I have a motion one way or the other?
Make a motion for Gores printing?
Motion to retain Gores printing for
This was my question. Are we going for the whole year, or are we going to?
I think that's going to have to be part of the motion as well. And we can, I mean, I don't know if we can consider amending in a meeting like this, but there's two different things in play.
But this is a legitimately advertised meeting. That would be the appropriate approach to amend. So the motion on the floor is to retain Gores. The implication would be for the entire year, unless the motion says something different.
So the motion could stay just for the primaries?
Yes. If anyone could put any motion on, anyone could move for anything, that's relative to the main question.
I'd like to keep it this, the way I, I presented it, because I, I don't want one person to say, well, I, I appreciate what Tom says, but I don't like this printer. This way, we just put this thing to bed today, and that's how, I'll just leave my motion the way it is.
For the year?
For the year.
Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Sorry, Terry, what did you?
Wait, I just required. Why, we're going to move this out there this question?
No, we need to vote on it.
Okay, this is done.
So we, this is done and off to the agenda?
No, it's not, it's not done. It's we still need to vote on it here at the Election Board meeting.
Yeah, but after that.
That's it.
That's it.
Well, we decided.
We decide in this room.
Right.
It's locked up.
Right.
Well, it goes to the, goes to the whole council.
Right.
For them.
Yeah, there's a first and a second. I think now.
All right. Does anybody wish to motion to amend it in any way? This is going forward for the primary and the general election as it stands now. The motion. Ms. Anon? I'll call them. On the retention of Gores printing for one year for the Erie County 2022 primary and general elections. Mr. Bale?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
No.
Mrs. Shauerman?
Yes.
Mr. Scatella?
Yes.
Mr. Shane?
Yes.
Mr. Winarski?
Yes.
Chairwoman Rennie?
Exactly. No.
Resolution passes.
Madam Chair. Does the election board have an invoice for contract?
No, I don't believe it does. We had some verbal back and forth and there was a paper that was passed around at the Finance Committee meeting, but I don't think.
So today's vote was just to appoint Gores, but not to approve the board contract. That's going to be the same resolution in front of county council later on.
Is it on? I don't think it's on the agenda.
We have to move forward.
Okay.
All right. Are there any other matters to come before the Board of Elections today? Anything for the good of the order? I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So that's it. This point. I guess part of it bothers me more than it was. The gentleman behind us was asked last week how he got that price. And he said that he received that price from Dominion Voting. Prior to my arrival with Election IQ, I spent prior four years, I started Election IQ in June, the four years prior to that, I was a customer relations manager for Dominion Voting for Pennsylvania, Ohio, and Tennessee. Dominion Voting Systems is a system spender. They have absolutely nothing to do with print side effects. They have, they have no dog in that hunt whatsoever. The job as customer relations manager is to interact with the counties to provide services to enable those counties to proceed with a successful election. In no way, shape or form, ballots come into play. That is coding, coding ballots. That is, that is setting up your LMA, helping with your LMA's. That was a factually inaccurate statement. And I could say that with 100% certainty that he did not get that price from Dominion Voting. We entered a bid in all fairness. And I would just like really to understand exactly how the pricing was presented to this vendor. That's, that's, that's all I'd really like to know. How did that happen? That's all I have.
Sure, we'd all want to know why, how.
It did not happen the way he said it. It was a specific question we were asked.
Gentlemen, this is, this, we're not going to get into base here today.
I just think.
Okay, I'm just, I'm just letting you know.
I understand. I understand.
We've given both of you gentlemen a lot of leeway. Like during the finance meeting, we gave you the leeway to present your, both sides the coin. We don't have to do that. Okay. I wish you would have said something when the meeting was going, but you waited till after we were adjourned. The show's over. Anything else?
This meeting is adjourned.